...in grade 10, get that over with.
Right.
Because there's also a little bit more space in tenth grade in terms of the number of Regents exams you take. So that's something that we will consider.
Okay.
On the first couple of go-arounds on the class, we'll probably be careful about who gets in because it's new to everybody. It's new to the teachers, it's new to the administration, and we really do want to make sure we understand the course really well so that kids are prepared to be in it. Yep.
Okay. And just one more question, and thank you for your patience, Dr. Baldwin.
Oh, cool.
So this, the seminar program is only going to be open to 10th graders? That's the current plan anyway?
The seminar class is meant for kids that are going into English II.
Okay.
I wouldn't necessarily say, though, that if a student who was a junior wanted to attempt the class and was able to, you know, I wouldn't close the door on that. I don't think we need to know who the kids are, right?
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation and for all of our questions. And yes, and the rest of the guys.
Talking and speaking up.
Thank you. And we will not be offended if you decide you want to go home at this point. Just saying.
My report?
Oh, yeah.
So it's been a pretty, prizzy, pretty, God, few, couple months in Baldwin. We were lucky enough to have the chancellor of New York State Education Department come visit our district. She was actually wonderful and charming and was really impressed by what she saw in Baldwin. And in particular, the level of opportunity for our kids. It was tough to get her out of one of the law and government classes because they were so engaged in the mock trial that was going on at the time. We were also covered in Fios One, News 12, and we believe an upcoming News Day article about our redesigned flexible learning spaces. As a result of that, we've had about five or six districts contact us about wanting to come and see what we've done in Baldwin. And those districts include Ullwood, Woodmere, Plainview, Old Bethpage, Oceanside, East Meadow, West Hempstead, Malvern. So we're a such a charge of state, so, no kidding. But that's actually been really nice. One of Mrs. Gadis from the high school mentioned that over the Thanksgiving holiday, she went to her cousin's house in New Jersey. And she came in and was immediately greeted with, "What is going on in Baldwin? I saw them on the news, and you need to share, you know, what's happening there." So it's actually kind of nice to be recognized, not only locally, but in the, you know, not-so-local community. We also had the dean of the School of Education, Dr. Alan Serra, from CW Post come visit us. We're looking at possible collaborations with CW Post. But he also was interested in the innovative ways that we look at instruction and wants his faculty to learn from us. And so we're planning a visit for members of the faculty of the School of Education at CW Post to come visit as well. A couple of other things that we're asking for the community's help. Right now, we're involved in three sort of contests. We have some photos that are posted on the AASA website. I think we have, I want to say, four photos. But I am telling you that one of our photos, the math department photo, is in fourth place nationally. So if we can get Baldwin people to vote, we may be able to be number one nationally. Not that we're competitive at all.
No.
But it would be nice if everybody goes up on their website. And we have sent you the links by email. But that's the one that seems to be pulling ahead. So if you have access to a computer and email, even multiple emails if you have them, if you want to vote for our math department website, you know. We also have, our high school concert choir is up on News 12. And I don't care if the cameras are running, but I think other places have bots going because inside of like a couple of hours, there were hundreds of thousands of votes for some of them, and I just don't think that's possible. But, you know, you're welcome to go vote. And E. Shell May is up as principal of the Best of Long Island. So please vote for Ms. May as well. And this hasn't happened yet, but it's happening this weekend. And it's exciting enough to, for me to want to share it with you before it happens. The Team Orchid, which you have heard about, which is kind of a group of students in Plaza School who have really gone deep into being journalists. But not only journalists, but really getting into the technology and video, and it's all posted on Plaza's website. They are hosting students from Plainview, Old Bethpage to, for our students to teach Plainview students the type of work that they're doing. And they are, I believe, going to video conference with an executive from Google. And, but really, the prize here is that our kids are going to be teaching Plainview, Old Bethpage kids not only how they act as journalists, but how they are using multiple forms of technology to present the articles, I'm putting that in quotes because they're not typical articles, to our community. And I will say that between that and our redesigned learning spaces and our academies and all the work that we've done, I am so proud that Baldwin is really leading the way. And we, and as promised, our website's been copied now a couple of times. And I have some inside information on some other places that have stopped people and said, "Have you seen Baldwin's website?" And so I know there's a few others that are now under development. So, you know, I mean, it really is nothing but pride for the work that's going on and the people in our schools and our community who have really worked really hard to get to this point. That's my report.
Okay. Now it is our time for comments and reports from the Board of Education. I started on the left last time, and I'm going to start down here with Mrs. Reed.
So it's been kind of a busy month for me. The beginning or in November, at the end of November, I attended the Nassau legislative meeting to ask if they would please get our sign on the agenda. There's some politics involved in, as Ms. Meriday, who's sitting in the audience, will attest to, that we're still waiting. So that was, but the plea was made. Then on, last week, I had the pleasure of going up to Saratoga Springs to attend a diversity symposium on equity and excellence that was hosted by four organizations: LEAF, the Superintendent's Council, NISBA, and SANNIES, SANNIES. And it was an amazing conference. I walked away with a lot of good information. I have something that I will ask Mary to photocopy and send to the board. The Ed Trust was there, they presented data supporting some of the things that, some of the thoughts that are going on up there. We've talked about the possibility of trying to hire people of color. That was addressed, it was interesting because they talked about New York State. The state has about 50% people of color in terms of the student demographics. 97% of the industry is not people of color. And so, and they talked about why students need to be exposed to people of color at some point in their education. But it's hard to do so when the people are not there. So they talked a little bit about, which I thought was nice because we'd had this conversation about doing our Grow Your Own program. And that's a possibility of trying to really kind of increase the number of people of color in the industry. There was a part, there was a pair of, a husband and wife who works in Ithaca College, the director of outreach and the director of guidance. And they did a wonderful presentation, gave us, like, there were five talking points that they talked about. One of the things that I really kind of walked away from was an activity that they did with everyone there, which was kind of a formative activity. It was an activity geared to having tough conversations about things that are race-related. So it was like this dyad situation where you partnered up. They gave an activity, a topic to discuss. And one person was the speaker, the other person was the listener. The speaker spoke for a minute. The listener then had to turn around and tell them what was said. And it was, it was an exercise in listening. Sometimes, the point of it was that oftentimes, when we are talking, we talk to people, and the listening that's happening is in response to what you want to say. And this was an exercise in truly listening and hearing what the speaker was saying. So that, you know, you're having these tough conversations, but people are actually listening. So, and then you turn around and they switched it. The person who was the listener now becomes the speaker, and the speaker now is the listener. So it was an excellent activity that I thought, you know, that we can walk away from. They also had us break out into small groups. And they gave us, and we kind of had this roundtable discussion about what equity and excellence looks like in your school district. And then you were asked to develop a plan and how you would go about, you know, implementing that. So it was, I'm so happy that I went. Like I said, I have information that I'll ask Mary to copy and forward to the rest of you. And I think that's pretty much, and I'm sure there's something else that I went to. We did go to a diversity symposium with Mr. Press at LIU Post, but I'll let someone else talk about that. It's been a very busy month, so concerts are starting. My shift, I'll start, I was at the sixth grade concert on Monday doing double duty. He has a duty. And I'll be, I'm hitting Plaza Brookside and the high school upcoming, coming up. So happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed.
I'll have anything for you.
All right. Mrs. Coles?
Hello, everybody. So it has been a very busy time, indeed. I've attended several concerts, and I have to say, that's probably one of my favorite parts of being on the Board of Ed, getting to go to the elementary schools, the middle school, the high school, and seeing all the different holiday concerts. It really is amazing. I was also able to attend an orientation of BOSI's with Mrs. O'Hagan where they spoke to us about different services and different ways in which they can assist our school districts, as well as giving us a small tour of the facility, which was very interesting. And last Friday, I was given the opportunity to go to Albany and attend a roundtable with the New York State Commissioner of Education. Events like this are very enriching and very interesting to attend because it involves people from all over New York State. And, you know, we're kind of in a little vacuum here on Long Island. And when you get off the island and listen to people from different school districts, you hear very different stories. It's very interesting to learn about the different challenges that they face, as well as different programs offered in areas that are very different from ours. There was an emphasis on, at this roundtable, on career and college readiness, which we've been talking about throughout the evening. It's really felt that that should begin in grade nine. Now, of course, on Long Island, here in Baldwin, we're always ahead of the curve with these types of programs. They also discussed the fact that in school districts and public school districts, that we really need to start focusing on breaking the chain of poverty through education. Traditional systems that are in place are not really designed to differentiate. Therefore, how, you know, how can we recognize it and attempt to fix it? And how can we change that? And I think that that's a very important conversation. So again, very interesting month. We still have some more concerts to attend. And I hope everybody has a wonderful holiday season.
I hope you all had an opportunity to see this. And I bring it because not only, congratulations, obviously, to our girls' basketball team who are just fabulous, but as long as I have been on the board, I think we have talked about how to get the good word out about Baldwin and what we're doing, how to get good press, how to brand ourselves and all the rest. And the fact that News Day at last picked up our tagline about what's brewing in Baldwin is just a testimony to the hard work that our Public Information Office is doing to get the word out. So I was really delighted to see that. I attended the Long Island STEM Hub program. I referred to it before. And it's a, it's a very interesting conglomerate of people. It's a combination of businesses, representatives of school districts, K-12, and representatives from higher ed. And one of the unexpected nice things was that the first speaker was Erin King-Sweeney. And her, most of her conversation had to do with Baldwin and the efforts that are being made in Baldwin to develop the area on Grand and Merrick Road. And the tie-in to STEM Hub was about jobs on Long Island, bringing jobs on Long Island, but that it is something that has to be tied to housing and other forms of development, that we all need to work together. And she was touting the fact that this was an across-the-isle project and that that is really how we need to all learn to work together. Anyway, the conference was, was very interesting. And one of the speakers focused on something I'm not entirely familiar with, and that is the gig economy. You're probably a lot more, some of you are a lot more conversant than I am. But she spoke about the fact that fully, I think 25% of millennials are actually involved in working in a series of either part-time jobs, jobs that are like, what I think of as contractual jobs. And very, most of the time by choice. That it offers an opportunity for creativity and entrepreneurship, and it gives them flexibility. Millennials are particularly focused on work-life balance, so that this is a way for them to achieve that as well. But it, it has very interesting implications for the workforce of the future and implications for school districts to prepare kids for an economy where they may be entrepreneurs, that they're not going to be working in, if they're not going to be working in a traditional field where they're working in a corporation or municipal job or whatever. But it was, it was a fascinating conversation. And then the other thing that, I had a meeting this morning, the Long Island Education Coalition, and we had a very interesting conversation about a meeting that I and three other people had with Kevin Law, who is the president of the Long Island Association, which is the business association for all of Long Island. And it really is essential with the possibility of serious impact by federal budget, which will in turn affect the New York State budget, which is probably going to have negative implications for school districts and school district budgets. And it's really important to have the partnership with Long Island's business community. So we were having conversations. Hopefully, we will be able to develop reports that both groups, the education leadership and the business leadership, reports that will show some of the negative impacts. And not just that, but also show some of the positive impacts that our fine educational system has on the economy of Long Island. I think we would all agree that a good education system is a value of in itself. But business leaders want to hear that there is an economic impact, and there certainly, there certainly is. So in any case, we were, we were having that conversation. So that, as everybody said, the concerts, I have to say, Sister Act. Fabulous, absolutely fabulous. So that's, I'll let somebody else take the floor.
All right, I will wrap this up. And I will, I will take the cue from Mrs. O'Hagan. The musical Sister Act at the high school was, was tremendous. Just all around, I'm always in awe of, you know, the talent onstage, which is obvious to anyone who shows up. But then behind the scenes, the stage crew, the pit, who, I mean, every year, they're just, and every year as we graduate these talented kids, and you wonder who's going to come in. And then we get even more talented kids that come in to fill their place. So that's incredible. I did, and the staff as well, the folks that prepare our kids vocally, musically. I did, you know, want to say, you know, Ms. Costello, who stepped in when one of our music teachers left, stepped in to work extra hard to keep the show moving. And then to Ms. Nykirk, our new hire, who apparently is fabulous and who stepped in to lead the pit orchestra, you know, very shortly after she started here. And it just turned out all around fabulous. I have a seventh grade concert again, and I wonder who's going to come up to fill the spots for all these kids who are graduating. And then I realized, oh, I have nothing to worry about because our program is so strong, even down at the middle school level and elementary as well. And then, so I was at the conference with Mrs. Coles and Mrs. Reed at LIU Post. It was a conference, this was the second year they did it, on the sort of the racial divide in educational equity. And it's a, I found it to just be a very interesting conference because it's like nothing that's off limits. Every conversation is welcome, and everyone is open to listening to the hard conversations. They were three of, we were the only three board members there from all of Long Island. And every, it was superintendents, administrators, teachers, and college-level administrators as well. And they were all just, I mean, they said to us, "Wow, thank you. So great that board members are here," which, you know, I didn't expect, you know, from administrators, because board members are usually the ones, the ones in the side. Yeah, so, so that was great. And I guess the thing that I will close on is the tax bill that is pending or in the, in Congress will be very bad for us on a personal level, but also educationally. So I would encourage everyone to reach out to their elected representatives. I know our New York representatives and Long Island representatives have come out against the bill in one way or certain portions of the bill, but I encourage you to reach out as well in the coming days. And with that, I'm going to end the comment period from the board. We have now reached the first comment and question period for members of the community. This period is the first of two. We will have one later on at the end of the meeting. This period is limited to agenda items only, so items that are on the board's agenda for the evening. This is a timed period, so it will last no longer than 30 minutes total. Each individual that comes up will have three minutes at the microphone. We ask when you get up, give us your name and address in case we need to get back in touch with you. Address your questions to me. We do not discuss individual students or individual staff members. And we ask that you ask your questions in a respectful manner. And I think that covers it. So with that, I will open the mic to see if anyone wants to comment or question. Yes, because the recording will pick it up.
Mita Meriday, 758 Wesley Street, Baldwin. I'm not really sure if comments from the board, if that's considered agenda items for me to speak on, because that's pretty much the part that I've heard about.
Sure.
Okay. Just wanted to say, and piggybacking on what Mrs. Reed mentioned, unfortunately, the item is not going to be included on the December 18 calendar. I was in attendance at the Rules Committee meeting after that. But that's not to say that this is not an opportunity. As Mrs. O'Hagan said, that we really have to get more involved in what's happening in the community. So I would suggest that school board members, parents, et cetera, write letters to the legislators. I have an idea who the new presiding officer is going to be, but since it's not been made official, and for those of you who don't know, the way the Nassau County Legislature operates as far as their meetings, the presiding officer is the one who decides what goes on the calendar. And the current presiding officer, Norma Gonzalez, did not run for reelection. So she's not going to be there come January, when the new team comes in. So this poses an opportunity, as I said. It all depends on who the new leader is. And if I know in advance, I will definitely get that information to you. So I strongly suggest, by having the presence, it does make a difference. Secondly, I wanted to give a shout-out to Baldwin. I attended a symposium myself at Long Island CW Post, whatever the name is, this week, that Congressman Swazie was hosting in terms of the same thing. They're trying to make a 495, they want to call this Long, High-Tech Island as opposed to High-Tax Island. But their focus is on 495, which we all know does not cross through Baldwin at any point. So they're looking at 495 and Route 110. Again, neither one of those areas cross through. But it crosses through his jurisdiction. But I was sharing with him about the academies and the programs that we have in the Baldwin school district. So I commend the superintendent and the staff for the work that they're doing. And the congressman made it clear that he doesn't have that in his districts. So this is an opportunity, again, for the partnerships and the collaborations with those school districts that are along that corridor. He made a point to say that his district, he's in the third congressional district, receives, I believe he said, $1.7 billion in defense contract funding. New York State as a whole receives $7 billion. I didn't say million, I said billion. So his district alone receives the largest portion that New York State receives in general. And we have a number of major corporations, Northrop Grumman, BAE Systems, Boeing, et cetera. They do, in essence, in excess of $1 billion in business here. Those are opportunities for us. And I know my time is up, but I just wanted to get that part out there as far as, you know, the opportunities, again. And I come from a business development background, as well as journalism background. So, you know, you have people right here in Baldwin that we need to tap into and work together. I've been working with LIA for a number of years. So, you know, this is an opportunity for us going into January 2018 to try to hold on to what we have and, you know, to work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meriday.
Good evening, everyone. David Smith, 1270 York Avenue. I just have a quick question for Mrs. O'Hagan as a follow-up to what you were saying about the economy of the future. Could you just offer a few more details about what was spoken about in preparing our kids for the economy of the future? And it's just ironic, a few days ago, in the New York Times, there was an article with the title, "Will Robots Take Our Children's Jobs?" And it goes in detail about, in 2030, artificial intelligence, robotics, and the advances in technology are basically going to take away a majority of the workforce, will replace a majority of the jobs that are available to the workforce. So I was just wondering, you know, with what you were saying, if there could be more details that you can offer as regards to that.
The thrust of the conference, which was fascinating, is that there is, there are many, many jobs on Long Island and around the country that are going unfilled. And the actual title of the conference was Middle Skills. So the jobs that are going unfilled- unfilled require, don't require a college diploma. They're, they, they are certificated kinds of skills. So, the, one of the purposes of the conference was to alert school districts and VOSEs to investigate the types of requirements that local businesses have, and, and guide students into programs where they can go directly into, into an act, into an actual job. There obviously is, is concern about the fact that a lot of the manufacturing jobs are going away, although they made the point that people do not think of Long Island as still being a manufacturing hub. It still is, but the companies are small and very much niche companies. So, more and more, the jobs that are available are very specific. And this was alerting schools and educational systems to where the jobs are and what we need to do to get kids prepared for that. The other thing that came up in the course of conversation was the need to prepare students financially, with a finance focus. If you're going to be an independent contractor, how that, how you, you manage your finances, and particularly your taxes. So, it, it was a far-ranging conversation, but really the, the focus was, there are jobs, and there will be jobs. They're just not the jobs there used to be, and that we really need to, to work to make sure that the kids get the kind of preparation that will, you know, put them in, in jobs that actually exist.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Same to you. All right, no one else rushing to the microphone. We are going to end this comment period and move on to board business. Board of Education approves the Personnel Actions Report for December, for the December thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen board meeting as detailed in the Friday mailing. Oh, sorry, the Personnel Actions Report as it ended. Moved by Mrs. Reed. Seconded by Mrs. Dreska, as this contains information pertaining to individual staff members, we do not discuss it in public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education approves the recommendations for services of the Committee on Special Education, SubCSE five oh four Committee, and Committee on Preschool Special Education in October and November two thousand and seventeen, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed. Seconded by Mrs. Dreska, as this contains information pertaining to individual students, we do not discuss it in public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education approves the Home Tutoring and Special Education Service Reports as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan. Seconded by Mrs. Kools. Again, this contains information pertaining to individual students, so we do not discuss it in public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education accepts with thanks a donation in the amount of eight thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars from the Herman Auerbach Memorial Trust Fund to be used to support professional development, curriculum enrichment, and innovative programming in Baldwin schools, as approved by the Superintendent of Schools, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed. Seconded by Mrs. O'Hagan.
No.
Mrs. Kools. Are there any questions or comments?
Yeah. So, this one is an amount separate from the fund that we currently get, so it doesn't affect, is the other one, the other fund that we currently get from Auerbach Foundation, that's an annual request that we can put in?
So, we are actually not requesting it, we're just being given, and this is in addition to that.
In addition to that, but utilized for just PD solely, because it specified the PD. You can't use it the way that you use the other fund?
Yeah, that's under the innovative programming section of this. So, it can be used however we want.
However we want, okay. Just wanted to see. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a thank you.
Yes, obviously. Thank you again to the Auerbach Foundation for their support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education accepts with thanks a donation in the amount of three hundred dollars from the Ridgewood Savings Bank to be used to support the annual mentor mentee breakfast at Baldwin High School, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Reed. Are there any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Ridgewood Savings Bank. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education accepts with thanks a donation of six hundred student planners from Dan Fisher of Quality Planners, Inc., to be distributed as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Kools. Are there any questions or comments?
Uh-uh.
And a big thank you again to Dan Fisher of Quality Planners, Inc. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education awards the pizza bid number zero three two dash twenty seventeen eighteen to Domino's Pizza, the lowest responsible bidder, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So much.
Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. O'Hagan. Are there any questions or comments?
Yes. I'm sorry, I didn't get to any of them, but there's, there's some questions. This one, can we use, is this for what? For what area? Is it like the high schools, just for the cafeteria? I know we asked before, but let's, only cafeteria. So, if elementary schools wanted to get this particular amount, it would not work that way. It's solely for cafeteria?
If they wanted to get it.
To utilize it for an event of some sort. Let's say the school wanted to purchase pizza, it's only cafeteria. Okay, this one.
It's a purchase of five.
Purchase of.
Passed through another organization.
Passed through other schools, any other schools.
If the school wants to do it, they can, but PTA?
Not PTA, I'm saying elementary school administration for whatever needs they have, not PTA.
This is a bulk sort of situation.
Correct, okay. That's why I wanted clarity on.
Shouldn't be going.
Yes, yes. It's a good amount, just curious.
Do they deliver within half an hour?
Or it's free?
That would be awesome. No?
No.
Okay. All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education approves the preliminary smart school investment plan as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Excuse me?
Oh, excuse me, sorry, going backwards. Board of Education approves the budget transfers over ten thousand dollars from July one, two thousand and seventeen, through September thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Kools. Are there any questions or comments?
Uh-uh.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education approves the preliminary smart school investment plan as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dreska. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Board of Education accepts the resignation of Giovanna Di Fiore, the internal auditor, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. O'Hagan. Are there any questions or comments?
I guess we just wish her well in her new position.
Yes. Yes, she is leaving us to take a full-time position, so we do wish her well, and thank her for her years of service. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education approves an agreement with Tonito Valderrama to provide an environmental education program for the period December one, two thousand and seventeen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, at a cost of fifteen hundred dollars per day, for a total of three days, not to exceed forty-five hundred dollars, funded through the Auerbach Grant, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan. Seconded by Mrs. Kools. Are there any questions or comments?
Just one quick question. The schools listed, is it really the four versus five? That was not a error? I didn't see the five schools. I didn't know why.
Great, so this is not the numbers nine, number nine is the one with the?
Oh, that's Frank Forster.
The other one, am I looking at the next one? Okay, perfect. Well, that's my question. Thanks.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education approves an agreement with Frank Forster to provide an aquatic education program for the period December one, two thousand and seventeen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, at a cost of fifty dollars per half-day, for a total of twenty days, not to exceed a thousand dollars, funded through the Auerbach Grant, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dreska. Mrs. Dreska has a question.
Yeah, the same question. I just wanted to confirm that was four schools versus?
Yeah, it's for four schools. It, it's to have, you know, like fish tanks and things like that. And Steel School is not included in this because they already have it done.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, as Board President, I'm calling for consideration of business items in tonight's agenda as consent items. This includes business items ten through seventeen. These are special services contracts and four obsolete items or groups of items. Are there any items members would care to withdraw from consideration under the consent agenda for further discussion and a separate vote?
Sixteen.
You want to pull that one out?
Yeah.
Okay. Any?
Ten through fifteen.
Ten through seventeen, with the exception of sixteen.
Okay.
You're good?
Okay, so, yeah, okay, so, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda, including business items, right, ten through fifteen, and number seventeen. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dreska. There any, oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion carries. So, we will now discuss the items removed from the consent agenda, beginning with item number sixteen.
So, I'm sorry. I'm sorry I didn't get this to you before, but I ca, I was looking at this item, and I counted, there's like over a hundred calculators that are being declared obsolete, which they break, the screens break, I get all that. Have these calculators already been replaced? And if not, are they being looked to being replaced this year?
Replaced.
Replaced or not? Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, like I said, I didn't get a chance to ask it. Yeah, no, I figured as much, but, you know, they're TI, and they're kind of expensive, and I was wondering what was going on with that. Okay, great, thank you.
Mary, can we just, with that question answered, actually, can we just go back and do ten through seventeen as consent at this point? Should we just do, I'm just going to do what we have, ten through fifteen and seventeen. All right, we need a motion to approve items ten through fifteen and number seventeen. Moved by Mrs. Reed. Seconded by Mrs. Dreska. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, Board of Education declares obsolete graphing calculators at the middle school and high school, which are broken and damaged beyond repair per state rules and regulations, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So much.
Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Kools. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. Board of Education approves the updated use of facilities report for July two thousand and seventeen through June two thousand and eighteen, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dreska. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education approves the following resolution, whereas the board, the Baldwin School District has an approved annual professional performance review, APPR plan, in place effective for the two thousand and seventeen eighteen school year, whereas the district has submitted an undue burden independent evaluation hardship waiver application to the State Education Department, since compliance with the independent evaluator requirement would create an undue burden on the district. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves and ratifies the district's November ninth, two thousand and seventeen submission of the undue burden independent evaluator hardship waiver application to the State Education Department, and be it further resolved that the board hereby ratifies the execution of the hardship waiver application by the Superintendent of Schools and the board. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dreska. Are there any questions or comments?
No.
No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education has a first reading of the following policies as detailed in the Friday mailing. Policy forty-seven fifty, promotion and retention of students. Policy fifty-seven ten, violent and disruptive incident reporting. Policy sixty-seven forty, purchasing procedures, and policy sixty-eight thirty, expense reimbursement. Do we need a more, I never remembered. Or we just need a motion?
Most of them.
Do we need a?
It's a first reading.
So, it's just, it's a first reading.
When you adopt it, you know.
Okay. Does, is, does anyone have questions on any of these policies at this point?
Nope.
Okay. Board of Education adopts the following policies as detailed in the Friday mailing. Policy forty-two hundred, curriculum management. Policy fifty-one fifty-two, admission of non-resident students. Policy sixty-one fifty, budget transfers. Moved by Mrs. Reed. Seconded by Mrs. O'Hagan. Are there any questions or comments? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education approves the new course proposals for the two thousand and eighteen nineteen and two thousand and nineteen twenty school years, as detailed in the Friday mailing. The two thousand and eighteen nineteen courses are Introduction to Media, Professional Ethics for the New NAF Academy, Principles of Hospitality and Tourism, also the New NAF Academy AP Capstone, AP Seminar, which we discussed earlier, and for two thousand and nineteen twenty, it's AP Capstone, the AP Research Class. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Kools. Are there questions or comments?
I have a question.
Okay.
The National Academy Foundation material that we?
Hours.
How, how does that work? How do students get those hours?
Well, the organization has many connections with various large companies, ERIC, Microsoft. They have replacements. We already have a strong workforce-based learning program, so the business office, it'll go conjunction with what we're currently doing. It'll be enhanced with the connections that the NAFT organization provides.
I, I was just surprised at the number of hours that are required, and, you know, if you have a robust program, you're looking for a tremendous amount of, of time. That's, I mean, it's great. I was just concerned about the ability of businesses to, to step up, especially with a paid internship.
Right.
So, again, the list of connections that NAFT has and brings to the table is extensive, so they do a lot of that labor for us.
Great, thank you.
So, one of, one of the reasons why we're even looking at this is to take our academy program and bring it up to the next level. And if NAFT can help us do that, then we're on.
Oh, I, absolutely. And, but, in the course of the things that I've been at lately, part of the concern is the ability to provide those school business experiences, just that there's not enough businesses up on Island to, to offer those kinds of things. So, I'm glad we're in on the ground floor, because help of that is the game. Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education approves the following resolution, be it resolved that the Baldwin School District hereby elects to have the civil service lists used for competitive appointments be provided by the Department of the Civil Service in strict grade order, as the district will hire by strict grade order and not based on any other criteria.
So much.
Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan. Seconded by Mrs. Reed. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Does anyone have anything under other that they would like to discuss?
Mr. Press, I'm sorry that I forgot to mention this during the report section, but if you wouldn't mind, I would just like to briefly report on a meeting with the BTC, the Baldwin Teacher Center. I've served on that board as liaison, so I just kind of want to give you guys a heads up as to what was discussed during that meeting. So, we got results back from the survey that was posed to the staff, so there were two things that kind of came up to, to the forefront. They wanted a little in-service and then some money to go towards purchasing of resources to be housed in this, in the teacher center. So, we briefly discussed how that budget was going to be laid out. Carla and Barbara will get back to the board after they've kind of had a little time to discuss that as well. We also were asked, all the members that serve on the policy board were asked to review a few websites. One of the ones that was, spoke about it, Norwegian, was Redorium. And so, there was a memo sent to Mr. Attila about the possibility of offering in-service to teachers for this, this program. The Redorium, it's, it's a mixed, it's a blended learning possibility for non, for science, I believe is it, science?
They say science.
Science curriculum. And, and it's kind of supposed to be kind of in alignment with, not kind of, it's supposed to be in alignment with the new regs that are coming down from the state. And so- The Redorium is a blended learning possibility for non... For science, I believe is it? Science?
They say science.
Science curriculum. And it's kind of supposed to be kind of in alignment with... Not kind of. It's supposed to be in alignment with the new regs that are coming down from the state. And so, there's discussion about whether we can, A, offer in-service on it and B, should we adopt or should we go for using the program, how it would be utilized, if it would be more kind of an additional resource to the things that are already presented, the resources that we currently have for the science program. And there was also discussion about a BOCs inquiry-based training that's gonna be taking place at BOCs on January 16 and 17. They're looking to send someone there and then come back and turnkey the training for that. So, that's pretty much, long story short.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Reed. Anyone else under other? No? Okay. All right. Before we open up the floor for our second comment period, I want to read you some important dates. Winter concerts, just go to a school at any time, there's probably a concert going on over the next week. School is closed for holiday recess Monday, December 25 through Monday, January 1. We are back to school on Tuesday, January 2. And our next Board of Education meeting is Wednesday, January 10. What? Oh. Okay. At 8 o'clock at Plaza School. And with that, I'm gonna open up the floor for our second comment period. This, as I said before, there is no limitation on subject matter during this period. It is a timed period, so it will last in total no more than 30 minutes. Again, each person has up to three minutes to speak at the microphone. Same rules apply as before. We don't talk about individual students or staff members. Address your questions to me. Give us your name and address if we need to get back to you. And with that, I will open up the floor.
Teresa Press, 1600 Berkeley Avenue. I'm speaking as both a parent and as one of the co-presidents of Baldwin Friends of Music and Arts. And I just wanted to personally thank the Board and the district for financing the expenses for the two... They're seniors now to go to the All-State Music Conference in Rochester at the beginning of December. I know for our daughter, it was such an honor to be accepted. She's devoted so much of her life to music, to have the opportunity to attend the weekend with some of the most talented kids in New York State. Not only was it an incredible learning experience, but it was a chance for her to rub elbows with people she's probably going to run into as she pursues her career. And I think that would be true for both of the girls who went and for anyone who went. It's really just an incredible group of kids and they're just on the brink of, you know, what they're discovering, what they want to do with their lives. I do hope the district will also consider helping to support the high school wind symphony, who... It was in the Baldwin Beat, which, you know, was a great write-up, but the wind symphony was invited to perform at the New York State Band Directors Association, just outside of Syracuse in March. And that's an incredible honor to be singled out, basically as one of the best bands, high school bands, in all of New York State. It would be much appreciated by the parents, especially those who have multiple children in symphony, to have some financial assistance from the district and to alleviating the costs of the trip and giving the kids this great opportunity. And, you know, just thank you again for providing our students with such an abundance of quality opportunities for them to pursue their interests outside of academics, you know, within the regular school day and then everything else that they do. I wholeheartedly believe that academic excellence is worth striving for, but I think that when it's supplemented with the music and the arts, not with my children, but with sports and other activities, it's really where they're allowed to grow and blossom and I think it just makes them better individuals. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Press.
Nina Maraday, 758 Wesley Street, Baldwin. Just had some questions about the accessibility to getting these purchasing procedures that you mentioned. Would the public be able to review that document and how, as well as the expense reimbursement? And was this something that was new or enhanced or just I wanted to get some rationale with regard to that? And looking at the new courses, definitely anything that includes media, I'm all for. But I think that one of the things that we missed, and for me, writing is very crucial, and in working with young journalists, and I mentor a number of journalists or journalism students at Host University, and it's the writing that seems to be problematic. So, I'm hoping that this intro to media, you know, along with the visual and the whistles and buzzes, we can kind of get back to what we're actually reading because we have a lot of problems with that, even with our young professionals coming out of journalism schools. We have a lot of problems with that on the writing side. And I'm definitely concerned with regard to how the civil service list is going to be incorporated from a hiring standpoint and whether that will address the concerns with regard to having a diverse faculty as well as support system for our young people. So, those are just some of the things from the information moving forward. And anything having to do with BOCs, for me, my focus is on veterans and trying to keep our veteran families here on Long Island and working with a number of the colleges and universities. And one of the things that we have, and I think it's great that we're looking at internships, but transportation is a problem for people over the age of 21. So, we really need to look at how we can enhance or work towards the solutions for transportation. And it is something that I've been proposing to the county executive-elect as well as the supervisor-elect for the town of Hempstead because we're looking to come together for a change to finally address some issues that can provide an island-wide solution that will really benefit those of us who are on the South Shore because we have so many limited options. So, just if I could get copies, like I said, of the purchasing procedure and the expense reimbursement and just, you know, some highlights with regard to, like I said, the new courses, I'm definitely all for, but I think we need to just drill down within that a little bit more. And there are other industries we've got. Healthcare is the leading employer on Long Island. So, that's just an area to look at, aside from just the major corporations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maraday. Okay. Seeing no one else rushing to the mic, I'm gonna ask for a motion to...
No. [inaudible]
Yeah. I mean, in terms of the policies, they are public, so they are definitely available.[1750.41]